Good here. The Monday, August 8th, 2022 meeting of the Marquette City Commission is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Hill? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here. Commissioners, do we have a motion to excuse Commissioner Hill? Pro Tem Mayor?
Madam Mayor, I move to excuse Commissioner Hill due to illness.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Bonzal?
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. We do have an agenda in front of us this evening. Do we have a motion on this agenda? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, our motion to accept the agenda as written.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Bonzal?
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Any discussion?
None.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. We have no announcements this evening. That brings us to boards and committees. We have three appointments on the docket tonight. Commissioners, do we have a motion on the appointments? Commissioner Hanley?
I move that we appoint Robert Kulisek to the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for an unexpired term ending 2/1/25. Wendy Hill Manson to the Harbor Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending 6/1/24. And Ann Donahue to the Harbor Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending 6/1/23.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Davis?
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Hanley, any discussion?
I would just like to thank them for being willing to serve, and I think these are three people that will fit each of these boards very well.
Commissioner Davis, anything?
Just diddle.
Okay, anything else? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. We have our first public comment session of the evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address. If you'd like to make a public comment, go ahead and address us at the center podium.
James Gallant, Marquette County Suicide Prevention Coalition, 538 Yoma Road, Scandia. And Madam Mayor, I would ask that you would update the community and myself on where you are at on my formal complaint and the ethics ordinance that I made from the floor and your request to legal counsel of, is there a form? Do you appoint a Board of Ethics ad hoc as you go? What's the deal on that? How's that all work out? And if you could, you did say that you would, as long as somebody kept talking about the stuff, that you would be willing to discuss that. And when again, I had to go through the Prescott Park again, and you know what? The widow maker's still there. I've got a picture of it, I'll send it to you. Widow maker right over the parking lot. It's barely connected to the ground. It's broke off. It's a foot and a half around. There's several. All along the roads, there's bottom of the trees rotted out. Could you please request an assessment from your forestry department, whoever is involved with that, Prescott Park Advisory Committee, whatever it is? And it says, and I've requested this over the years, but my idea was, can't we just recruit like the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, well, get together, we go and, you know, your guy did the chainsaw, and we can haul them. I would volunteer for that. We'll haul the brush out, get it out of there, especially the white birch. The white birch on the ground, so they say, is, my understanding is, that's the Dutch Elm disease, it kills those, goes down on the ground, self-perpetuates itself, is killing all the trees in there. Need to get that stuff out of there and start over and let it, I guess, let it regenerate. And that would be good, if we just formally get an assessment. Have you ever had one? I don't know. I've been asking for years, and apparently they're waiting for it to come to you, from you. And that would be good, because we did have a seven-year-old that just got killed in Yellowstone. Tree fell right under tent. Boom, right there. But, you know, I guess if they rented that spot and they left that tree there, you know, who's responsible for that? Everybody's expecting governmental immunity on this. What is, I don't know, whatever you're thinking. And also, I see this, there was, my question here was, were these reappointments, but obviously they're not if you're going for an unexpired term. And, but I did notice in some of the minutes that you were reappointing, and that, I believe, when they did the charter review, along in all those lines, that reappointments are inappropriate, and you have to reapply. Because I noticed a lot of that. There'll be one person comes in, one name, and then you reappoint that person. You don't really get applications of people that were, and that, that's not the rules. You get back to the rules and follow them, including Roberts Rules of Order, which is, of course, you probably do it today, is page 366, line 8, "There shall be no debate before there is a motion that has been properly seconded." And the decorum is, "The statements must be germane to the immediately pending motion." So please start doing that. If you can start doing it and then just keep doing it, and then everybody will just be doing it. Nobody will know the difference. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. It's been several meetings since I've said something, and you knew that wasn't going to last forever. I read in the consent agenda for tonight's meeting, a proposed letter sent by the Marquette City Commission to the Attorney General of the State of Michigan, responding in some way to the letter written by State Representative Sarah Kimbenzie to Attorney General Dana Nessel. Speaking as a taxpayer, there are many, many, many things I want the city commission to do. Wasting your time on this letter is not one of them. Number one, speaking as a lawyer, the letter from Sarah Kimbenzie to Attorney General Nessel was not addressed to anyone in the city of Marquette. It was not addressed to anyone, therefore, there's no legal, ethical, moral, or common sense reason why you'd respond to it now. Secondly, the letter that was sent had multiple, and I mean multiple, specific concerns, one of which, which is dropped out, as you can read on Facebook. The letter that is being proposed is sent back as like cotton candy written on a balloon. There's no facts in it, there's nothing real about it. It basically says, hey, we read your letter and we don't agree. Well, number one, time and place, you don't ever answer something like that until you have to. And number two, why are you bothering wasting taxpayers' time and money, because I'm sure your lawyer will charge you? Well, come to think of it, you work for the city now, so it took her away from something else to write that letter. It's not necessary, and it doesn't help anything for you to say, we don't agree with Representative Kimbenzie. She didn't ask you if you agreed. She asked the Attorney General to look into this. There's a myriad of things to be looked into, and this particular letter serves no useful purpose. One of the things, when I advise a client and they come to me, my favorite phrases, they're coming to me jumping up and down. I tell them the first thing to think of is, what happens if you do nothing? And we go from doing nothing to the nuclear option. Usually, we settle between option two and three, but we always talk first about, what happens if you do nothing? I encourage this commission to take that letter out of the consent agenda and put it aside. You don't need it, it's not required, it doesn't help us, and it makes you look like you're doing something, but you're not. Because there's nothing you can do as an elected body until or unless the Attorney General reaches out to you. Time and place and what you say. And therefore, I recommend that you remove that letter and not send it at this time. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Public comment is now closed. Up next, we have a public hearing, item two on our agenda, Land Development Code amendments. This will require a roll call vote. City Clerk, can we have the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. On April 12th, 2022, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing for the consideration of a comprehensive set of amendments to the Land Development Code that had been the subject of several months of work and refinement before this meeting. After considering the proposed amendments and conducting a public hearing, the Planning Commission approved the following motion. It was moved by S. Mittelfelt, seconded by M. Dunn, and carried eight to zero, that after review of the draft Land Development Code, LDC amendments, presented as case 01-0A-04-2022. And after conducting a public hearing and careful consideration of the contents of the draft LDC amendments, the Planning Commission finds that the draft LDC amendments are consistent with the recommendations, goals, and policy objectives of the Community Master Plan, comply with section 54.1405 of the Land Development Code, and therefore are justified and appropriate, and therefore should be approved by the City Commission as presented. These amendments were approved by the City Commission at the May 31st regular meeting. However, a clerical error led to the exclusion of two paragraphs which should have been included in the proposal. These two paragraphs cover amendments to sections 54.1107 and 54.1109 within the Land Development Code's Article 11, signs. In the attached draft ordinance, strike-throughs indicate repealed content, while yellow highlights indicate newly added material. This public hearing was scheduled at the Commission's June 27th regular meeting. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, following the public hearing, approve ordinance 713, which makes amendments to the Land Development Code. Alternatives, as determined by the Commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Members of the public wishing to make a comment on this public hearing have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and physical address, unless you've already done so at this meeting. Do we have anyone wishing to speak for this public hearing?
James Gallant, Scandia. While you're doing these public hearings, while you're taking care of the business, please follow the rules. Don't understand what you're doing right now, I guess you didn't, you couldn't make a motion at any time, sometime before the discussion. And because as you know, Roberts Rules of Order is the approved guidance, okay? The only approved guidance. So if you're not going by Roberts Rules of Order, somebody should say, and say that you're completely off the rails, or maybe you're going kind of, you know, a blended version or whatnot, and who made that rule, and how it all works. Or just point of order, reset the rules, so that we can move forward as a community and, and you folks ain't just making it up on the way. Thank you.
Anyone else for the public hearing? Related to the Land Development Code amendments? Anyone else? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this public hearing, or on the amendment to this? Commissioner Davis?
Your Honor, I move that we approve ordinance 713, which makes amendment to the Land Development Code.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Bonzal?
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Any discussion? Commissioner Davis?
Not really, it's just an oversight that we are correcting, and glad to be doing it.
Commissioner Bonzal, anything to add?
Yep, I just want to say that I'm glad that we were able to have a really productive meeting on May 31st, and this is just kind of adding in literally two paragraphs. Too bad there was a clerical error, but it's easy enough to correct. So I'm glad that we're able to finally wrap up this process, and hopefully have some more good Land Development Code amendments coming down the pipeline next year.
Any other comments from the Commission discussion? All right, City Clerk, could we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. Up next, we have item six, consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Hanley?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second? Pro Tem Mayor?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Commissioner Hanley, any discussion? Pro Tem Mayor, any other discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Unfinished business, we have item four, the NFPA Fire and Life Safety Ordinances. This will require a roll call vote. City Clerk, could we have the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. To ensure the safety of residents and visitors of Marquette, staff is recommending the City Commission adopt the most current versions of the NFPA Life Safety Code and the NFPA Fire Code. These codes are nationally recognized standards promulgated by the National Fire Protection Association, an international nonprofit established in 1896 and devoted to eliminating death, injury, property, and economic loss due to fire, electrical, and related hazards. The NFPA 1 Fire Code is intended to advance fire and life safety for public and first responders, as well as property protection, by providing a comprehensive, integrated approach to fire code regulation and hazard management. Similarly, the NFPA 101 Life Safety Code is the most widely used source for strategies to protect people based on building construction, protection, and occupancy features that minimize the effects of fire and related hazards. Unique in the field, it is the only document that covers life safety in both new and existing structures. Proposed ordinance 703 would adopt the most current version of these two codes as the standards for the city of Marquette, and will ensure that both commercial properties and rental units will be in compliance with industry best practices into the future. Additionally, proposed ordinances 704 and 705 would provide for a local and consistent appeals process for both commercial and residential rental properties. A public hearing was held for these ordinances at the March 28th City Commission meeting. The decision was tabled for a later date during discussion of the item. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, adopt ordinances 703, 704, and 705. Alternatives, as determined by the Commission.
So Commissioners, we will have a presentation on this, but I'm hoping maybe we can get a motion on the floor first. Do we have a motion on this item? Pro Tem Mayor?
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt ordinances 703, 704, and 705.
And do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. And before we move into discussion, we will have a presentation from City staff. Our Assistant City Manager, Sean Hobbins, has that for us. Afterwards, we'll go to Pro Tem Mayor, Commissioner Stonehouse for discussion, and then the rest of the Commission. Thank you, Sean.
So I just wanted to reiterate on what we're talking about, perhaps frame of discussion. So here's kind of the agenda of this presentation. We'll discuss the goal of what we're doing, what we currently have adopted, and what the state currently has adopted, our primary concerns with the current adoption, and then PA 230, which is commonly referred to as steel derosset, and the state's codes. So of course, our goal is to ensure the safety of residents and visitors in Marquette by adopting up-to-date fire and life safety codes in accordance with national best practices, and that's what the NFPA codes are. So for our current adoption, we do not currently have a fire code adopted. So that might be kind of confusing for someone who's watched this kind of evolve. We have portions of fire code adopted, we have fire code incorporated with other code, but we do not have an actual fire code adopted. The state has adopted the 2006 edition of NFPA 1. And as I mentioned, we have adopted the NFPA 1 Fire and NFPA 101 Life Safety Codes as issued as a part of the Rental Fire Safety Ordinance, but that does not transfer to commercial properties. So our state code concerns, and one of the reasons why we're doing this, is the city is unable to enforce state fire code. Their enforcement as exists is limited and under-resourced. I've heard, you know, just anecdotally, in terms of, you know, different inspections for childcare facilities, they have a six-month backlog, and that's just one element of their state code inspection. They will not delegate this enforcement. A local fire code is required for fire code enforcement. And it seems to us that this is almost by design. They expect you to adopt a local fire code so you're able to enforce this. Otherwise, you have to wait on them to have time to come to your community. And as we know, in the Upper Peninsula, we're often neglected. So our proposed action is to adopt NFPA 1 Fire Code, which advances fire and life safety for public and first responders, and adopt the NFPA 101 Life Safety Code, which are strategies for life safety based on building maintenance, protection, and occupancy in existing structures. So this isn't something that addresses new construction, that's something that is addressed at the county building code level and is governed by state building codes as well. So the problems we're solving tonight, assuming you pass this, is we will adopt a local and current fire safety code that will allow us to have a local enforcement of fire codes. It provides for a local appeals process, which currently we do not have, and it provides a minimum standard of fire and life safety protection. So just a clarification on an issue that was raised at the public hearing when we last discussed this, in terms of PA 230, commonly referred to as steel derosset. This is the Michigan Construction Code Act, and this action created a single-state building, electrical, plumbing, and mechanical code for the state of Michigan. So an overarching level of code for building regulations in the state of Michigan. Any local fire code that's in conflict with the PA 230 is superseded by the state adopted codes. So we don't need to go through and redact everything that we do, because the state automatically takes precedence just by the nature of law. Now, the differences in the state adoption of the NFPA Fire Code is that the state could supersede the steel derosset or PA 230 with the adoption of a new fire code, because they're on the same level. So they can say, they can pass Law A, and then they can pass Law B, and Law B can counteract parts of Law A, because it's passed with the same authority. We can't do that. We, we have a clear hierarchy of regulations. The state comes first, and then the city comes next. So when the state redacted their code, they were saying PA 230 comes first, NFPA comes second, and we have to redact it to make sure it's not in conflict. And then far below that, here we are with our fire code. We don't need to redact anything. We just have what, we have the fire code adopted and able to be enforced on a local level. So that, that kind of sums up what we're trying to do here tonight, and I hope clarify some of the misconceptions we had at the previous meeting. And I'm happy to take questions, and I might defer to our fire chief or our fire marshal on some of them, but let me know what you got.
Thank you, Sean. You probably want to hang out there just in case you do have questions, I appreciate it. Pro Tem Mayor, you want to start us off?
Thank you, Sean. You know, my understanding of this was really that we were not, and I think you explained this rather well, that we're not necessarily adding any more additional rules or regulations or, you know, making it more difficult for developers to build more housing units or anything like that. What we're really doing is just talking about being able to enforce the current state guidelines and regulations, more or less, right?
That, that's exactly correct. You know, these are the standards that should be followed anyways, because they are what the state is asking for. We are just asking for the ability to enforce it locally, because the state is under-resourced.
Okay. And I mean, at the end of the day, all of these should be being followed currently, because it is currently state law, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think I have anything, any more further questions for it or anything really to add. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. Great presentation, thank you for helping to, to clear up the mud that's been, I think, around here for some time. Though not germane to the motion made, or to the topic, Your Honor, I think it's, it's worth just talking about it for a second, which is, well, these fire codes, the safety codes, I think are well and good, well needed and well intentioned, particularly considering Marquette burned to the ground in 1868, and we almost did it again in 1938 with the old Opera House fire. Certainly, whatever we can do to become more fireproof becomes very important to us. But I do think we need to also take a look at also adopting Code 109, which is the code for protection of cultural resource properties, as well as looking at 914, which is the code for historic structures. And I say that because neither one, to my understanding, is incorporated within the two base documents we are accepting tonight. And given the importance of historic structures to the city of Marquette, and the large number that we have, I think we have eight different structures that are on the national registry. And I believe that includes St. John's Church right across the street here, and knowing the cultural importance of that structure, as well as the number of other sandstone structures. In fact, about 10 years ago, National Trust for Historic Preservation named Marquette as the number-one city in the country for the preservation of sandstone buildings, that we do have a large number in town that really need to have, I think, some special treatment and some specialized eyes looking at them as the opportunity presents itself. And I think having the base documents as part of our fire code would enable us to do that in a more efficient manner. So, great presentation, thank you, Your Honor, for giving me a minute.
Any other discussion from the Commission?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And Sean, thank
And Sean, thank you again for a very succinct and clear presentation on a potentially endlessly complicated topic, so thank you for that. I think that you've more or less answered both of these questions, but just for the sake of the public, you know, I've had some folks reach out to me with concerns about some of these changes when we were considering them earlier this spring. So I have two hypothetical questions for you, and if either you or some other member of city staff can answer them, I would really appreciate it. So first, let's say that I was a developer who was looking to purchase a property and build some new apartments, maybe even 600 West Spring Street, right?
Sure.
And how would that affect me? How would these changes affect me?
It shouldn't affect you at all. Basically, new construction is already covered by PA 230 and the state's adoption of the NFPA, and any construction would go through the county building code department and would have to follow current standards.
Awesome. Thank you. And the only other thing is if I'm, about 50% of people in the city of Marquette are renters and some others are landlords, so if you're a landlord or a tenant with an existing residential building in the city of Marquette, how does this affect your life?
We have already adopted these NFPA codes under our Rental Fire Safety Ordinance. So it already applies, you would not see a change.
And those are automatically updated to the current code, right?
Correct, and that's what the proposed adoption would do as well. So we always stay current.
Great. Thanks. I appreciate it.
Any other discussion from the commission? Commissioner Hanley?
We've talked a lot about who it doesn't affect. Can you go into detail about, like, who is going to see an actual effect based on this? Like, when this, when we adopt this, it's going to affect someone. I'm assuming commercial properties.
Sure.
Is there going to be inspections that are going to happen?
Yes.
What's going to be the next steps after, if we adopt this?
Yeah, and I might ask, you know, our fire marshal or fire chief to go into a little bit more detail, but we would see inspections of commercial facilities. We would see enforcement of the regulations that should be followed under state law, and I'll let Fire Chief Davis kind of expand on that.
Sure. Exactly what Sean just said. We're just looking to have the businesses maintain the safety features that the state mandated when they were built. So we're looking at things like annual inspection and maintenance of their fire suppression systems, sprinkler systems, their alarm systems, making sure fire doors still shut when they try to shut them, things like that, just so that over the years, their fire safety isn't degraded from the standards that were set when it was built, is the main thing.
Does this, is this going to be a cost on the actual commercial businesses, the cost for the inspection every year, or is this going to be something that the city pays for?
Sure. It's an hourly fee for an inspection, just like we do now for some of the businesses in town that pull, that need a city license, motels, hotels, resale shops. And basically, we're just looking to expand it to restaurants, bars, making sure that their commercial kitchen or commercial cooking equipment is cleaned every year the way it's supposed to be already, just making sure that it's getting done.
Okay. And the majority of cities, I assume, do this already, doing these checks that we would be doing? We'd just be bringing ourselves up to what everyone else is doing?
Correct.
Okay. And what is the cost per hour for the inspection fee?
Under the current fee schedule, it's 65 an hour. And they're generally, I checked with the fire marshal, and I believe they run, you know, 15 minutes to a half hour. They're not generally a full hour.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other discussion from the commission? I see our city manager. Go ahead.
I just wanted to make a point of clarification for Commissioner Hanley as well, just because of, I can already sense the question, but I think it's important to state that the revenue that would be received from the inspection is to cover costs and not intended to be a revenue-generating source for the city. So while it is tempting to think that way, it is not something we are allowed to do.
Any other discussion from the commission? Thank you. Karen. Pro Tem Mayor?
All right. So I'm going to make a motion to make a friendly amendment to my original motion, which was to adopt ordinance 703, 704, and 705 to instead be, I'm going to try to do this a little slower for Kyle, adopt ordinances 703, 704, and 705, and direct city staff to explore the adoption of NFPA 909 and 914 to present to the commission at a later date.
Okay. Do we have a second on your amendment? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I'll second the amendment, Your Honor.
Okay. Discussion on the amendment, Pro Tem Mayor?
I just think Commissioner Stonehouse brought up some great points, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of areas of the city that would fall under both these codes that I think we certainly would want to protect, and it's worth us exploring. And I think taking this approach is, we can still review it, discuss it at a later date without just adopting it.
Anything to add, Commissioner Stonehouse?
Only, Your Honor, I think it makes a great deal of sense to do it incrementally, look at it, see if it makes sense to us. If it does, to carry through with it. If it does not, we just don't do it.
Okay. Commissioner Hanley?
I'm, I am all for protecting buildings, but I know nothing about these actual codes that we're talking about, and I don't know that it's germane to what we're talking about with the Life Safety Ordinances, to put it here. We can just direct city staff to do that without an amendment, I think, so I will not be supporting this.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yeah, I agree with some of the points about the importance of historic preservation that Commissioner Stonehouse made. I was just curious if, because I'm also not familiar with either of these codes, if Mayor, Pro Tem Mayor, or Commissioner Stonehouse, or perhaps city staff have additional information about them that they can share with us. Because I agree with Commissioner Hanley, it does feel a little bit like it's coming out of left field, and I want to make sure that I'm able to cast an informed vote.
I think, maybe I'll take a moment to see if city staff has anything they'd like to comment on with potential friendly amendment.
Yeah, it's not something we've explored up to this point, but I think Chief Davis and I would be happy to look into it. He might have an extensive knowledge already, I'm not sure, but, and provide a report to the commission based on those findings and give a recommendation. You know, you guys can direct us to do, you know, things however you'd like to, but I think that shouldn't be an issue to look into it, unless you disagree.
At least from my point of view, it seems like the motion is such that it could be researched and decided whether it makes sense. Other comments from the commission or discussion on the amendment? Commissioner Davis?
Well, yeah, I guess I'm pretty neutral on this, and I'm glad to hear that you feel that it would be worthy to look into it. The fact that Commissioner Stonehouse brought this up, those are the kind of things that I feel our city staff listened to and would have done without the need for the amended to the motion. And, you know, I guess, given it more thought, I prefer that it hadn't come out of the blue, but again, I'm kind of neutral, and I guess I will vote yes just because the two of you thought that it would be an appropriate thing to do.
Are we ready for a vote on the amendment? I think we might be. All right. Do we have a good understanding of the amendment, or do we need a red back? I think we have a good understanding. All right. All in favor of the amendment? Please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes four to two. Okay, so we have an amendment to the motion. Do we have any other discussion on the full motion as amended at this point before we go ahead and take a vote? And this is a roll call vote? No other discussion? All right. City Clerk, do you mind to conduct that roll call vote for us?
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you all, especially city staff and our chief of police and fire marshal. Appreciate that. Okay. New business, number five, EV Smart Communities Commitment Letter. City Clerk, could we have the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. EV Smart Communities is a recognition program designed to provide communities with a roadmap to electric vehicle EV readiness, including securing funding and getting projects off the ground. The path to becoming EV-ready involves a portfolio of best practices and actions that include both simple steps and more complicated initiatives that makes it possible for any community to participate. The program provides flexibility for individual community priorities and institutional capacity. Participating communities will create an environment of peer communities to work together and establish new EV markets and benefit residents and businesses in their local communities. Successful community participants will be recognized for their work to accelerate local adoption of EVs while benefiting the economic, social, and environmental vitality of their community. Communities pursuing EV Smart certification will receive the following benefits: technical assistance, a roadmap for securing both state and federal funding sources, partnership development with local electric utilities and other private partners, recognition as an EV Smart Community Program participant. To participate in this program, a letter of commitment needs to be approved by the governing body of the organization. The program will pick 25 communities to participate, half of which will be rural-based. The EV Smart Communities Program is led by Clean Fuels Ohio, the Ecology Center, Michigan Municipal League, and the Great Plains Institute. It is funded by General Motors Climate Equity Fund. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Opportunities provided by this program may require financial commitment from the city in the future as approved by the city commission. Recommendation, approve the letter of commitment to the EV Smart Communities Program and authorize the mayor to sign. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Davis?
I move we approve the letter of commitment to the EV Smart Communities Program and authorize the mayor to sign.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Bonzal?
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Commissioner Davis, any discussion?
I'd like to point out that this is more of an application that, and if we are fortunate enough to be one of the 25, or maybe half of those being rural, communities that are selected, there's a lot of benefits, particularly as we look at our, having already been chosen as my next cities. You know, and we do have some unique challenges as we look at electric vehicles and that being that we're rural and very rural, and that we are in the northern part of the country that presents different challenges. So I feel that this will really align well with our other efforts and very much support this.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that Commissioner Davis said it quite well. I'll just add that I think that we need to be thinking in the long term, and the city commission has approved, or set a goal of getting the city of Marquette to eliminate our carbon emissions by 2050, and I think that this can be a very consistent effort with the My Next Cities Initiative, but also with the Climate Action Work Group that will hopefully be incorporated into our upcoming community master planning process in the next year, which the commission also committed to creating. So I think that makes all the sense in the world to move forward with this. Hopefully, we're selected, and we can get some technical assistance, we can get some information about how we can be doing better to evolve with the rest of the world as we move toward electrification of our vehicle fleet.
Any other discussion? Pro Tem Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think I would just add to that, and I agree with what both Commissioner Davis and Bonzal just said, but I would just add that, you know, we have major automotive companies like General Motors or Ford saying that they're planning on having all of their vehicles be electric by 2030, and with the current amount of state and federal funding, that grant funding that's possibly available for EV adoption, being at the forefront of that and being proactive, I think, is a really smart move for us to be doing, and it's heading in the direction I think we've been working towards with our climate adaptation plans or My Next City, Smart City plans as well. But, thank you.
Any other discussion? Let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Brings us to our next public comment session of the evening. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address unless you've already done so at this meeting. Go ahead and approach the center podium for public comment.
Brian Miller, 712 Chippewa Square, The Continuing Saga of the Water Fluoridation. There's a paper, actually, there's a very good article called "The Fluoride War Is Ray John." It's actually very balanced, presents both sides of the discussion. It references this article, Benchmark Dose Analysis for Maternal Pregnancy Urine Fluoride and IQ in Children. Remember, I referenced the importance of looking at contemporary research rather than legacy research because science advances and changes. Just want to read something here. It says, "It's not disputed that fluoride is toxic at high levels," says Christine Till, a neuropsychologist at York University in Toronto, Canada, and lead researcher of the JAMA pediatric study. "But what happens at lower levels, such as the 0.7 milligrams of fluoride per liter recommended in U.S. fluoridation, is contested." That's what Till and her colleagues have been working to tease out. You have some weaker studies saying there's no effect, and then you have our study and the Mexico study. This is the Mexico study that I referenced, that are high-quality, saying there is an effect. These are excellent studies, better than any of the past studies. On the basis of these two studies, Philippe Grangin, and I have his CV here, extremely impressive MD neurotoxicologist of world renown who worked on the lead and mercury issues and now is working on fluorine. On the basis of these two studies, Philippe Grangin, a physician and environmental medicine researcher at UC, at the University of Southern Denmark in Odense, put together a benchmark dose study on fluoride to document concentrations at which fluoride begins to have detectable adverse effects in IQ. According to the report published in June, that level is 0.2 milligrams per liter. Okay? Want to emphasize, fetuses are vulnerable at 0.2. We put 0.7 in the water, like everyone else does. That's less than one-third the recommended level for U.S. water supplementation, 1/20 of the U.S. maximum allowable level of four milligrams per liter, a level originally intended to prevent skeletal fluorosis. These numbers are just the beginning. More cohort studies are underway, and toxicologists and epidemiologists hope they'll bring clarity to the fraught debate. In the past 30 years, researchers have shown that the developing brain is uniquely vulnerable to lead, mercury, and neurotoxins. Low-level lead was contentious, but it doesn't match up to fluoride, Lan Fier says. He's a neurotoxicologist in the study. I don't think people have been skeptical enough about the benefits or the safety of systemic fluoride. So that's a more recent study, which pretty much incontrovertibly shows the problems. Pregnant women.
That's three minutes. Thank you. That's three minutes. Your time is up. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
James Gannon, Scandia. I would like to point out, as we're, as we're ongoing this conversation about the rules of procedure, is during that public hearing, it says, so my point is, it says, you obviously made the, okay, you want to make the motion first, like I suggested you might not, but the point is, did these committees and where these recommendations come from, did they follow the rules? Or did they, that's the semblance of order, has to come from recommendations to you with the same rules and according to, and it all calls a semblance of order. So, did they do that? Did they? I guess I'll have to look into that, and we'll come back and talk about that. And, but then, clearly, Roberts Rules of Order says there's no such thing. There is no appropriate time for a friendly amendment. That's not. So is that like you say that stuff out loud so that these committees will say, hey, they were doing friendly amendment, so we're gonna, it's clearly in the book. It said one of the changes was to address the friendly amendment thing because everybody's saying that when there's no such thing, when the appropriate thing probably would have been to just withdraw your motion and make the motion, including what you wanted to amend it, or somebody else's motion to amend your amendment. There's, you know, but not a friendly amendment thing. That's just, that just confuses the situation about the, but then what happened was, Madam Mayor, you assigned the floor to the clerk for his familiar presentation and recommendation on the fire safety, and then you immediately said, oh, we can't have a presentation before there's a motion. Yet you just had one. So is that the time, is that the point in time when it was, here are no objections, you get to deviate off the rules and not follow Roberts Rules? But just in real time, and it's just like dynamically in real time? Or do you have to invoke that rule and say, hey, we're going to suspend a rule, we're going to have a presentation and recommendation from your clerk before the motion? That's supposed to be every time. This is completely inappropriate that you would assign a floor to the clerk and to start the debate, which, when he gets done, you generally don't need any more discussion because you just got all the information and you just go, yeah, whatever you just said. So that is the debate. That's starting the debate without the motion. And suspend a rule, but that's just, why just do, why just not do it? And just start with a motion? Because there is absolutely no reason, unless you'd like to explain, why you assigned the floor for the report and recommendation. You know you're going to vote on it. You know what's going to happen. You know how it's going, but it is a clear, and it seems like a willful disregard for the rules and order, and to confuse your boards and committees under and to confuse your boards and committees under you, and how they run it. And now, does the chair of these committees, like the zoning board and all these boards, do they get to drive off the rails too, like the mayor does? And, you know, it's just, I guess, we'll just keep this conversation going, and we'll do it in real time, and that's the point. And then you just not do it, and you just keep willfully do it. Oh, yeah. And your response to the thing, that was in, that was, you just kind of agreed with the person, your colleague, instead of actually saying why you disagree and to any substance. That was the inappropriate part. But please discount the attorney that said-
Time is up. Thank you. That's three minutes.
-that you should not comment on things that you don't have to make a decision on.
That's three minutes. Your time is up. Excuse me. Your time is up.
I did finish my sentence, please.
No, you will be escorted out if you do not immediately stop talking. Thank you. Yep, no problem. Anyone else for public comment?
Oops, I'll be done. It won't take me a minute. You know, I just want to, I don't want to-
Name and address, please.
Oh, Barb outside, sorry. 1324 North Front Street. You know, that was nine minutes, and I don't really want to engage you after this meeting, James, but, and I understand you live out in Scandia. This is really tiresome. I don't think that it's really making an impact and changing anybody's feeling about this, and I wish you would stop. That's all I want to say.
Anyone else for public comment?
Margaret Brum, I apologize to the lady who came before me. I should have looked before I stood up. I had one thing to say, but first I have to say something else because you've just been given some alarming statistics by a person waving a piece of paper that purports to be a study that says if you have babies exposed to fluoridated water, it's going to negatively affect them developmentally. I can speak to this on a personal basis, and I think it's time for some common sense in this. Marquette was one of the first cities, I think it was third in the nation to adopt fluoridation. So it happened before I was born. So I drank fluoridated water my entire life. And in the 10th, in the fifth grade, when you did the national testing, my mother was called into Principal Watson's office and told that her daughter scored the highest in the nation on the achievement test given to every kid in the fifth grade at that time. And that was done to a person who was forced to drink fluoridated water every day. So before someone waves a paper in your face and says, this person says this is a problem, it never hurts to have some common sense about it, and that's what I'm trying to give you. Maybe that person could be referred to Marquette County Health Department, but that's not my business. I just want you to know, you're not necessarily dumb because you drink fluoridated water. Number two, I wish to put the city on notice that there's an issue with dangerous garbage being present on city streets. I'm doing this because last year, when I fell on city property, I was notified by the city that they had no consequential liability for my fall because they were unaware that there was any problem with the parking structure in which I fell. So to make you aware, on the record, on the film, and for the official notes, in the last three months, I have found three extremely dangerous pieces of garbage on Pine Street, which is a residential area. Two of them were broken beer bottles, which were shattered all over four pieces of sidewalk, and the most recent one, and the most troubling one, was a rusty razor blade in the gutter on Pine Street in front of a house where a couple and a young toddler live. And before anyone tells me, we don't know where it came from, we can't stop it, I'm here to tell you, there's three instances of dangerous garbage being present in residential neighborhoods. I can pick it up, I can sweep it up, I can take the razor blade and put it in a pooper bag and put it in a plastic cup and stop that person from hurting someone else, but I can't be on every street. So now I've made my official notice to the city that there is dangerous garbage present on Marquette residential streets, not just annoying, but dangerous. And I have photographs of this if anyone wants to challenge me. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Seeing no further public comment, public comment is now closed. It brings us to comments from the commission. We'll start with Commissioner Stonehouse and go down the line.
This weekend, I think, really showed that Marquette is still a port city. When you looked at all the activities that were going on down by the waterfront. For example, in the morning, I think Saturday morning, we had the harbor cleanup going on, where they're getting the tires and other garbage out, and it was a pleasure to see all the diving support that's come in from outside of the city, bringing their boats, bringing their equipment to be able to do that, and have the city out there with a lifting device, as well as certainly the ability to take care of the garbage when they were done. But that activity was also started on Friday when we had the Michigan Lighthouse Festival in town, and that is the Michigan Lighthouse Festival, 129 lighthouses in the state of Michigan, and they had selected to come to Marquette for the weekend of really events and planning and conferences, and it was, again, a pleasure to see the use of the water for that. And lastly, to think, if you weren't there Sunday for the South Shore Fishing Association finish, you missed a rare event, because for the last seven or eight or 10 years, the South Shore Fishing Association has been taking vets fishing one day a summer. This year, they had 52 boats, 92 vets went out fishing, and when they came back into the harbor, they all formed up at the knuckle on the breakwater, you know, that was where that little midlight is, and then they paraded all the way down Mattson Park Wall, made the turn at the yacht club, and back out again. And as they went down Mattson Park Wall, there literally were hundreds of people on that wall that were applauding them as they went past, not only for the fish they caught, which they proudly displayed, but for being a vet, and being their, obviously, their work in defending this nation, but also applauding the people running the boats that had volunteered their time and their craft to put that type of special event on. And in speaking with one of them, just chatting, he looked at me and he said, you know, he said, this is what makes Marquette special. And I think he was spot on with what he had said. Again, a rare event, plan to be there next year, because it truly is something that I think you have to see to really understand how deep the feeling goes. That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you. Oh, tall ships this weekend. I mentioned the whole thing about being a port city. Well, they're going to be coming in on Friday, I think. So be there, be there, or be square, right? Thank you, Your Honor.
Commissioner Hanley wanted me to add, there's also the tallest rubber duck in the world, as part of that.
The big duck. Eighty feet high.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, for one, am very excited about the giant rubber ducky. The, I just wanted to thank my colleagues for a productive meeting tonight, and also just wanted to specifically thank our city clerk, everybody else that works in the city clerk's office, and all of the many, many folks who step up, just regular residents of Marquette, to make our democracy work whenever we have an election. We just had a primary election last Tuesday, and I was very impressed by, you know, I went and voted in person, and I was very impressed by how efficient everything was, how friendly and helpful all of our people staffing the elections were. And I was also very pleased to see how quickly we were able to report our results, you know, compared to the past, anyway. So I think that it's clear we've got a well-oiled machine going over there with the city clerk's office, and I want to really express my gratitude to everybody who stepped up and spent a very long day making sure that everybody in Marquette could exercise their right to vote. I volunteered to do that in Marquette Township during the 2020 presidential election, and it was a very educational, eye-opening, and exhausting experience. So I think we all owe all of them a big thank you. Other than that, I don't have anything else to say.
Commissioner Davis?
I'm just going to do a quick thank you to Commissioner Stonehouse for highlighting all of what went on last weekend, and letting everyone know about the tall ships and the rubber duck this coming weekend, because it sounds like a lot of fun. And other than that, I have no comments.
Commissioner Hanley?
Thank you. First, I would like to congratulate the fire department on another successful fill-the-boot. The fire department was able to collect $12,542.72 for the Muscular Dystrophy Association, which is phenomenal for a two-day event. And also, thank you to everyone in the community that donated to that cause. It's always wonderful to see the people that give it to it, and it's wonderful to be there for that. And then the second person I would like to, or person I would like to congratulate, is our fellow Commissioner Jen Hill, who could not be here today on her primary win.
Pro Tem Mayor?
Nothing further.
I have a few things. So, one, I addressed the rules of procedure question at the meeting on June 27. Folks can watch the recording of that. My stance has not changed. Couple things happened recently, exciting things in Marquette. We had the Blueberry Festival about a week and a half ago now. Fantastic return. Congratulations to the downtown, the DDA, all the businesses that showed up, the vendors. Really was nice to see Marquette thriving again and kind of humming with all that activity. And then last week, I had a couple of meetings, one with our new Lakes Period Community Partnership Director Christopher Germain. He's off to a fantastic start. And then another with the Consulate General of Japan, who visited on, was it Wednesday and Thursday of last week, and we had a really nice, nice time getting to know him, as he is kind of helping keep our sister-city relationship going. Upcoming Wednesday, I will be at the Mental Health Task Force addressing suicide issues here in our community. We've had some youth instances in the past year, and I'll be representing both the city of Marquette and my day job at Marquette area Public Schools at that event on Wednesday. I also am still engaged in the NMU Presidential Search Advisory Committee, and we will have an update on August 10, where we have application materials for any candidate who has applied, and then that committee will move forward with reviewing materials and choosing which candidates will be in the preliminary round of interviews in early September. The final few candidates would then go to the NMU Board of Trustees to make their final selection. So that's going on. This coming Friday, there is a Michigan Civic Coalition event at the Peter Wright Public Library. I have information if anyone wants to email me, or I believe the Peter Wright Public Library would have that information as well. Basically, about civic education in our community and how we can strengthen and improve that, you know, our local government or connection to students and making sure they're receiving the right information and how to be engaged in the community in the future. And then finally, we don't have another city commission meeting prior to our budget meeting, so I wanted to mention it. I'm going to look at our city manager and make sure. August 25 from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. here, and that will be kind of a marathon budget meeting session, open to the public, and will be recorded as it is a budget hearing. So folks can either watch live at home, watch the recording later, or come here, but we're going to try to squeeze it into one day rather than a few couple-hour segments. That's all I had tonight. Kick things over to our city manager.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everybody that community office hours is Wednesday, August 10, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Peter Wright Public Library. Again, an informal little meeting that you can come and have a cup of coffee, talk with. Myself and sometimes a couple city commissioners are often there as well. So please mark your calendars for that and come and visit me. Also, to piggyback off of the South Shore Fishing Association Veterans Fishing Tournament this past weekend, we're hoping by next year we will have some equipment there to assist some of our disabled veterans and then also disabled residents or customers that would like to come and be able to be lifted into their boat with assistance from some equipment. So more information will hopefully be shared on that soon, and that would be supported by the South Shore Fishing Association as well. And I do want to thank a representative of that association, and also the city manager from Ishpa Ming, who has been really kind of leading that, as he's involved in that association, and near and dear to his heart. So shout out to him on that one. And just, I did also get some information on an issue we're having with contamination at our glass recycling location. The dumpster that is at the municipal service center, which we really pushed so hard to get and had a lot of faith in, and was very successful, is experiencing an increase in contamination with some of the cardboard and plastic bags being dumped into that receptacle. So while the landfill can crush glass, or while the processing facility can crush glass, it cannot remove that contaminated material. And if this does persist, we really need to be evaluating how we can offer this as a service for our residents without increasing costs on that. So just keep an eye on that, folks, and make sure that you're not putting any other materials, other than glass, in that receptacle. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 7:00 p.m. Thanks, everyone.